Please, let's end the disruption. Yes?
Item number one is motion Wesson Courts Martinez et al. and City Administrative Officer and Chief Legislative Analyst joint and individual reports relative to Proposition D Medical Cannabis Dispensaries and Adult Use of Cannabis Act.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, for those of you that came here for the committee hearing that deals with our cannabis issue, I think we should consider ourselves fortunate that we have two visitors with us today, from the, one from the state of Oregon, the other from the state of Washington. We have Rick Garza from Washington, he's the director of the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board, and then we have Stephen Marks, the executive director of the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Where are you guys? If you could come up, there you are. Okay, so we'd like to ask you to take a seat if you would. And before we get started, I again want to thank the both of you for coming down to Los Angeles. As you are well aware, we're, you know, trying to put something in place that makes sense, and we are smart enough to at least ask those who have boldly gone before us and to see if we can, you know, listen to some of your experiences. And we really appreciate that you'll come and share with us some of the good points and some of the bad points. So for, on behalf of all of the people that are here, we really do appreciate you taking the time to come. So what we have is we're gonna take some public comment, you know, as we go through this process. But what I want to start out with is let maybe both of you say a couple of words, explain, you know, what it is you do, and then we'll take it from there. And I would urge the individuals that have come here today, you filled out cards, take advantage of asking questions of the individuals that we have here from out of state, so we can get a feel for how they do things. I know I have a series of questions. So why don't we start off with you, Mr. Garza, and again, welcome.
Good evening, council members. For the record, I'm Rick Garza, Director of the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board.
Get a little closer.
Hello? That close? Let me try again.
Okay.
For the record, I'm Rick Garza, Director of the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board. Good evening, council members. I think what Steve and I would like to do from our respective states is maybe a very short presentation that gives you the context, because I suspect you're gonna have a lot more questions with the time that we have. So if it's possible to go ahead and... So really, the foundation of the regulations that were put in place by the Liquor and Cannabis Board have much to do with what's known as a Deputy Cole Memorandum, which was issued nine months after legalization for Washington in Colorado in August of 2014. And I'm gonna really hit mainly on the first three, and they're all eight important enforcement priorities, but our regulations were really driven by the first three. So really preventing youth access, so I guess the context I would provide, because all of the states, the eight that have legalized, have very different systems in place. First of all, I'll give you the context of Allison Holcomb, who was the author of the initiative, the policy director for ACLU, created the initiative to mirror the alcohol beverage law in Washington coming out of prohibition. So think about that for a moment, and I'm gonna share with you the regulations that we put in place, the qualifications and requirements to hold a license, the enforcement provisions. Many of it was, looks like it did in 1933, after prohibition with our alcohol beverage law. First, like alcohol, you have to be 21 or older to consume or possess. Like we have in Washington, we do premise checks and stings on liquor license establishments. We do the same with our retailers for cannabis. We conduct at least three times a year compliance checks with all retailers. In fact, our compliance rate for cannabis is higher than it is for alcohol. Typically, the compliance rate for alcohol retailers is somewhere between 86 and 92%. We have restrictions for where these businesses can be located, 1,000 feet from places where children would be present, schools, childcare centers, transit centers, game archives, library, playgrounds, public parks. That also applies to advertising. You can't advertise in 1,000 feet from these entities. And then there's packaging requirements. No product advertising can be designed in a manner that would be especially appealing to children. Edibles and infused products, packaging and product must be approved by a four-person committee at the Liquor and Cannabis Board. Next slide. Give you some examples of what we saw in the black and gray market before legalization. On the left, bright colors, gummy bears, cotton candy. So we actually wrote a regulation that said that nothing could be especially appealing to children, and we define that as bright colors, anything that mimics what a child would find appealing. On the right, you see an example of the packaging that is approved. Next slide. Preventing involvement, as you see in the Cole Memorandum, of gangs, cartels, and criminals in this enterprise. So we have a pretty rigorous licensing process. A criminal history is done for each applicant. Anyone that has any financial interest in alcohol, it's 10% to be a party of interest. In cannabis, it's any interest in a license. We do a Washington State Patrol criminal background check, and then we have an agreement with the FBI for a countrywide background check. We also do a financial background investigation of the applicant. We want to know where the money came to establish the business. In fact, we even go further. The initiative requires that we do a criminal background check and a financial background check on any investor or financier. So it not only includes the licensees, but it includes anyone that has invested or financed the business. Unlike the other states, vertical integration is not allowed in our state. If I'm a producer or processor of cannabis, I can't hold any interest, direct or indirect, financially, in a retailer. That goes back to the old Tidewell law around alcohol coming out of prohibition, where you could not hold a manufacturer or distributor license and hold interest in a retailer. In fact, that statute remains in California, Oregon, and Washington today.
Yes, it does.
But it goes back, as I said earlier, that the author of the initiative built it to be very restrictive and controlled, as we did alcohol coming out of prohibition. And so we partner with local law enforcement to shut down illegal production, distribution, and sales. Before I move to the next slide, I'll say that because of the vetting that we do with respect to licensing requirements, we have had more success than any of the other states in getting regional credit union and state charter banks to provide financial services. So in fact, in February 14th of 2014, FinCEN, the Department of Treasury, issued guidance to the states that had legalized, that basically gave you guidance of how you were to interact with the state. And one of the things that we've been able to do is if a credit union wants to establish an account, or if I, as a licensee, want to establish an account with a credit union, we provide a signed waiver to the financial institutions that are signed by the licensee that provides us the opportunity to provide the license file to the bank. That's the criminal background check that we did, the financial investigation that occurred. That waiver is signed by them. We also, on our website, provide monthly sales of all businesses, producer, processor, retailers. They're required to do that in the traceability system that we've created. That information is available for banks to see if the amount of reporting of sales that's occurring, that's required to be reported to the board, is consistent with the money that's moving in and out of the financial institutions and banks and credit unions in our state. We also provide, through public records request of the banks, the ability for them to get all violations, any kind of issues that have occurred with the licensee. So monthly, we provide on our website, any violations that have occurred with respect to a producer, processor, or retailer of cannabis. Next slide, please. Preventing diversion. Probably the most important piece for the federal government was making sure that product would not be diverted out of the state, or that illegal product in the state would not be diverted into our legal system. So like many of the states, Oregon and Colorado and Alaska, we have a traceability system, a seed-to-sale system, that all producers, processors, and retailers must report some on a daily basis, their sales if they're retailers, but any movement with respect to a producer or processor of cannabis within their facilities, or sales or movement to another facility. We have security requirements, extensive camera coverage, indoor and outdoor, detailed security plans in place, and then we curb the ability for individual consumers to divert by possession limits that we have in our rules. I guess one of the people said, "Well, how could you determine that you're not gonna divert product out of the state?" We actually were required, we went out with an RFP in the very beginning and hired Botek, Dr. Mark Kleiman, who's pretty well-known around the country and the world with respect to drug policy. We also subcontracted with the Rand Corporation, Dr. Bo Kilmer. They actually surveyed the state by city and county to determine what the consumption was of adults over 21. They determined initially 150 metric tons. We built our system to grow that amount of marijuana. And so we determined, and we created different tiers for production, we actually set a limit for the amount that could be grown, and then we also were required by law to set a limit to the number of retailers. I saw some of the documentation that I read with respect to the work that you're doing, that you're gonna determine also the number of retailers, it appears, in the city. But we had to do that. Some of the states like Colorado did not do that initially, but that was one of the ways that we felt we could prove that there was an effort to try to only meet the demand of the public over 21 in the state of Washington. Next slide, please. Consumer safety. Thank goodness Colorado had placed, had in place regulations with respect to medical marijuana when legalization occurred in Washington, because honestly, we had no idea what the requirement should be with respect to packaging and labeling of cannabis. So we do have the set of regulations that we gained from Colorado, limited service and concentrations per package. We kind of learned early in some of the issues that were happening in Colorado, they started six months before us, that they were having issues because they didn't have maximum amounts with respect to potency and THC in the edibles and infused products in all cannabis. So we set serving, individual serving limitations of 10 milligrams of THC and 100 milligrams for a whole product. And as you can see, we have warning labels, reusable, child tamper-proof package. And then we worked with the Washington Poison Center to put together an emblem that we could use on all packaging of edibles and infused products that would keep it away from kids. Actually, what was brought to us was Mr. Yuck, if you remember years ago, that was used as a way, but the industry didn't think too much of that, that makes sense. But they actually came up with something that we're proud of, which is a symbol that you can call if a kid were to get, or a child, and typically it happens with those six and younger that get into this packaging because it isn't tamper-proof or resealable. So one thing I said shade is, we went into legalization when we had a gray market of medical marijuana in our state that was not regulated, and so we were competing with that, and there were lots of issues with respect to packaging and labeling requirements with respect to the gray market. Obviously, like all the states, there's testing that's done. We have 16 certified labs in the state. They test for pesticides, herbicides, fungicides. We partner with the Washington State Department of Agriculture to do conduct random pesticide testing. We just started that in the last two months. Next slide. Thank you.
I tell you, that was very interesting. Now, Mr. Marks, you want to go, or should we ask some questions of Pryor, or maybe you should give your, and then we'll ask questions of you both.
Yeah, you'll see some redundancy here between Rick and I's presentation.
And again, thank you both for coming.
Rick always gets to go first. Washington was ahead of us. Appreciate it. I'm Steve Marks, I'm from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, and we have legislation pending to change our name as well to the Cannabis and Control Commission. Oregon's, you can go ahead and flip the slide. Oregon's system started by ballot measure, it gave us the authority, it was based on alcohol law, it provided for four plants, an exemption for four plants for home grow, gave us the opportunity to regulate recreational marijuana, and provided that we'd have that system. So we've been on that mission ever since. Like Rick, he pointed out the Cole Memorandum, so I just want to say, our ballot measure had some of that policy written into it, sort of mimic the Cole Memorandum. Nice thing was, when we got the system, our regulated community was really accepting that we would look at that kind of system to put it together. Regulation was a tough, interesting issue for the community throughout Oregon. We're not a large state, we've got about, you know, 4 million people, but we're pretty rural and diverse. And a lot of folks, you know, didn't know what the system was going to involve going forward, so we spent a lot of time doing early communication with the people that were gonna be affected by it, with local governments and with the communities around Oregon. As we found out, you know, you don't control your timing when you get in the middle of these things, so once you get rolling, it starts happening very fast, and the cannabis community was really interested in, and moving forward with speed. Our legislature was interested in us doing that, but it takes some time. You gotta set up a cannabis tracking system, you gotta bring in a workforce to look at enforcing the regulations. Somehow, you gotta figure out how, what your regulations are gonna be and train people to those, and that all takes time. We greatly benefited from both Colorado and Rick's experience in Washington and cribbed off them along the way. Yeah. Preventing youth access is pretty similar to Rick's presentation across the way. I'll just jump to packaging in Oregon. You cannot have packaging that appeals to children by its name, design, use, or cartoon characters. We restrict the use and marketing of some strain names attractive to children. Out of 500 strain names we had in our tracking system, we prohibited 14. Some of those were not just attractive to children, some related to drugs, like a strain named LSD. A lot of the names were related to Star Wars, and Star Wars derivatives. Advertising restrictions, so if you can't target audiences under 21, and when we look at the metrics for, you know, your, for your audience or your medium for media, we want no more of the audience than 30% to be under 21. Go ahead and flip the slide. Ah, there we go. Preventing criminal activity. So our system, I just took this point, it's a little out of sequence here, but our system's wide open compared to Rick's. We started off, it's qualifications-based, so licensure is unlimited. As long as you meet our criteria, you can receive a license. It's also, you can have multiple license types, and you can be fully vertically integrated. We do have a canopy limitation on the grows, and you as a licensee can only have one of those grows on your own property, but you could have another grow on another property that you own. Likewise, on the, it's a little confusing here, but on the single property, if you had your own grow, you were the owner, you had your grow, a tier-one grow under our system. If you had land and the right land use status, you could have another grow of another licensee on the same property. At part, Oregon sort of had this debate about, a debate about public safety and the economy itself, and what it could do for people, and there was a fair of sort of corporate takeover of the system. And we're pretty wide open, and we have very small licenses, and we have some subsidized licenses that pay less of a fee to produce in Oregon. But like Rick said, we have the same kind of criminal history investigations that he has. Ours is lead-based FBI system. We have the financial background investigations. We do not look at resources under 10%, but we do look at all corporate officials and corporations. And we have cannabis workers permits as well, and we do background checks on them as well. In terms of working with law enforcement, we work with state police and local governments across the board. That's a two-way dynamic. We work with them as growers identify illegal grows and talk to us about them, and there's a lot of confusion about Oregon, because not only do you have our regulated grows, but you also have hemp grows that are legal and look similar when they're on the field. You have medical grows that are confidential grow sites and look similar in the field. So a lot of the work we do is sort of straightening out whose grows is where, when we can, and referring people to the right, right part of the system. Next slide. Preventing diversion. What we're finding now, and I just was talking about that, is more and more licensees come into the system, we're certainly getting more and more pointing out of illegal activities that are taking place throughout the state. To do that, we have a similar system that Rick has created for Washington, a cannabis tracking system. We have a different contractor, ours is Franwell Metric, who also worked on Colorado's system. But you know, cannabis tracking system doesn't do it alone. It gives you indicators about what's going on out there, and it triggers, you know, your idea that you might want to go out and take a closer look, you might want to do an inspection. So that works in conjunction with inspections, it works in conjunction with the security requirements, cameras, the backups that you put onsite, safety and security measures for storing the product onsite, retailers and panic buttons, and then an important requirement in the tracking system, and actually requires you to put this in, is to have a travel manifest when marijuana is leaving a licensee and going to another licensee. That really helps both the licensee, because they're moving that product legally in the state of Oregon, and it helps law enforcement so they can readily identify that that's a legal licensee, and they're fully entitled to carry that product to another location. We have our possession limits across the board. I'd be happy to get you the detail on that information. Our flowered possession limit is announced. Compliance, my recommendation, or you know, you want to just be as early as you can in figuring out your approach to compliance. The good news for someone thinking about it today is you got other states to draw on that have been there and other folks that have done it. And Rick's, you know, one of the things that Rick's staff pointed out to ours when we were wandering in the wilderness a little bit was, you know, there's a really difference between this and alcohol facilities, and you really have a lot of little private businesses on the one hand, and retail that's not, in Oregon, does not do service, right? It's just sales. So it took a different kind of enforcement arrangement of staff to be able to look at retail, but then how do you look at all these private businesses? Some of them in rural Oregon, you know, but processors in our cities and growers inside our cities. So it's a little bit different approach there, and we really appreciated their advice. Next slide. So Rick didn't call his symbol the universal symbol. I say we have three universal symbols. Ours is different than Colorado's and Washington's, ours is unique to us, so that's our warnings symbol that it's marijuana. We have a pre-approval process for OLCC all packaging. It's pre-approved, so our labels, pre-approved. That doesn't apply to, well, no, that applies to everything on the pre-packaging. It's unique at how much we do, because we do approve everything. We have, you know, there's different serving sizes and concentrations based on product and based on whether it be medical and recreational or recreational, and then we have childproof resealable containers required for edible products and topicals and others, the ones that we don't require. They have to be childproof on leaving, but are not childproof or child-resistant, resealable, or single serving size that are 15 milligrams or less, and anything that goes out, and flower can be heat-sealed, it just needs to be child-resistant on the first instance. You can see we have a prototypical label that, this is actually a template that our staff is developing, because labeling's an art, there are a lot of containers out there that require labels. But you can see on that mock-up label the kind of information that we're requiring. So we require a strain name, the time of activation, in this case, it was probably flower and says immediate, when the product was harvested, the product identification number from the lot size, the lab that tested it, the test date, the batch size, our warnings, which will come up on the next slide, and then who it was produced by and who packaged it. So on the next slide, we have our warning labels, so it's for, you know, for adults over 21, keep out of reach of children, illegal to drive motor vehicle while under the influence, do not...
Period. Let me, I'm sorry, because I don't want to forget that. Illegal to drive under the influence, period, not based on amount.
Not based on amount. We do not have a, and we didn't recommend, we were actually required by the law to take a look at DUI and intoxicated driving. One, our report on our statistics conclude, it was a little early for us for this first round, but in Oregon, we basically have the physical standards test in the field, that we use a lot of field sobriety tests. Our public safety community actually believes in that, and we did not put in a presumptive blood alcohol level for THC, nor did we recommend one in Oregon.
In Washington, by the way, just to interrupt, the initiative has a five nanogram DUI level. There were a lot of concerns by medical patients, for example, that that level was much too low, but I'm just sharing with you that it's a little bit different than Oregon. We do have a five nanogram level in Washington state.
So what, how do you test for that?
Well, it's done by taking a blood test right now. Actually, University of Washington and WSU are looking at trying to create some kind of a swab that law enforcement can use in the field, but at this point right now, they would have to presume again that the person's under the influence and take them in to do a blood test.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
No, perfect. We also have that warning on the activation time for edibles, and that can take two hours or more to go into effect. Don't eat, I'm sorry, I missed that one, on things that aren't supposed to be eaten, if they're extracts, concentrates, and topicals, and then I believe this, the last warning is only on medical products, that this product is not approved by the FDA to treat, cure, or prevent any disease. Next slide. Consumer safety. Oregon has extensive product testing. We test from every harvest, we test every product that heads to market. It is a very, very difficult thing to do, as you know. And Oregon and Washington had the experience with a lot of private labs doing testing before we had the legalized system. They get a lot of different results from different labs. We went through and had the labs that were gonna be licensed by us, they had to be certified by our Oregon Health Authority and ORLAP, which is a lab certification firm. So they certified the procedures, the knowledge at the lab, and then the machinery to carry out the tests. So we test product at the producer, and then I should say processor points in the supply chain. We have a test panel for potency, water content, solvency, pesticides. We don't have heavy metals, but we're thinking about a random test for heavy metals. All medical products are tested, and that's a little deceptive, because they test off a, off a harvest, our general flower batch size is 10-pound batches. So they would test every 10-pound batch of flower. They gave us some dispensation to test less, because we were having supply issues in our testing capacity overall in the state, and so we're testing 33% of the product, or one out, or a batch size of 30 pounds for the recreational system currently. We need to look at supply and demand and then determine whether we're gonna increase that again or not. Next slide. Yeah, these are just general recommendations, I think they're pretty obvious ones. The piece that I did provide you, some information that I brought, and I think one of the important parts is, you know, these are businesses in the community. you know, these are businesses in the community, and that was one of the focuses that we had to. If we wanted our licensees to be successful, then we had to give them normalized business services. So we put out a business readiness guidebook that I brought to you. It really sort of gives the A to Z. If you're going in the business, who regulates it in the state, small business? What you do with wastewater? What does land use look like? How do you find out about agricultural pests and pesticides and what you can do? So you have that, and it's quite handy. We also brought to you a packaging and labeling guide. Actually, I hadn't seen this copy until I got here. I've seen bits and parts of it before it was put together, but I don't realize how complete it actually was. So it just tells you, you know, what we do in the detail of our packaging process. And then one of the important things in Oregon, when they passed the new law, we didn't actually have responsibility for it, but people didn't know what was in the new law. They didn't know what their possession limits were. They didn't know what the home grow was, how much you could keep of marijuana product in your home off those plants that were grown. And the legislature gave us a very small amount of money, but a very effective campaign that we were able to do within was just what's legal? And we just focused on letting citizens know, under the new law, well, it was legal, because it was very confusing. There was a lot of detail to it. And then we followed that up, so it was educate before you recreate. There's a website that was behind this, and it's just, you know, what'slegaloregon.com. And all of these checkers here on the website version, you could punch on them, and it would give you more of the detail, very iconic, so you could tell sort of, you know, what you could do as a citizen to stay out of trouble and to, you know, recreate responsibly. So it was educate before you recreate. We've continued that with Go Legal, which is really an appeal to our licensees or prospective marijuana businesses that kind of give them a sense of what you need to do, who you need to go to if you're interested in getting in the marijuana business in Oregon. And we're working up and seeing the industry is thinking about partnering now on Bi Legal, which is really crafted to be an alternative to the black market and illegal markets.
Okay. So again, is that, I want to thank both of you, and I have a couple of quick questions. I'm going to see if the members have some, and then we're going to take some questions from the folk that are here. Mr. Garza, I was curious, you talked about limits of TH, THC, is that the-
Correct.
How do you do that? Who determined what the, how did you figure out? Because I think I read on, I read on Stevens, on one of them it was 42, 32 percent or something, I thought, on your labeling. I'm just curious, how did you, who decided what that mixture should be?
Well, the producer and processor would. There are no limits right now. That's, that's an issue that's debated around the country in our state, whether there should be potency limitations, because there aren't now.
Oh, then I missed you. I thought you said there was.
But on the packaging, it's required that it be tested for the potency, and that's required to be placed on the label.
Okay. So either one of you just jump in. Two questions. How long did it take you to get up and running? And what would you say to us as the do's and the don'ts? So who wants to?
Well, I guess the fortunate thing we had is the initiative passed in November of 2012, and we had until December of 2013 to write our regulations. So it's a great question, because I would take the time you need. And I can share with you that it's never going to be soon enough for the industry. But one of the things that we did was we took six months to travel the state and have public forums. We actually had public forums before we wrote the regulations. We went out in the evening and met with the industry during the day. We met with local elected officials, the enforcement, local enforcement, and then the prevention and health community, to hear from them specifically, what are your concerns? And basically to share with them how we were going to set out the regulations. So we did that for six months. Then we actually spent about six months writing the regulations. And so we took a little time. In fact, folks used to give us a bad time, because Colorado had started six months before us. But like I said earlier, all the systems are very different that were put in place. Colorado allowed vertical integration in its medical. All it simply did to get started were allow those that had medical licenses to hold a recreational license. That was not a cumbersome, I mean, I'm sure it was, but it wasn't like us setting up something that was separate, that didn't allow vertical integration, knowing that the medical in our, in our state was vertically integrated. So we struggled for about a couple of years. But I think what's really important, to your point, is take the time that you need. I think one of the things Oregon did really well, and I could see it in Washington, was the level of communication that they had, not only with licensees, but with the community and citizens. We used the consumer guide that Colorado put together for our retail shops. But I was watching as Oregon was implementing its new law, the level of communication that they did, a lot of the work that they did to help businesses understand. We kind of left it up to the cities and counties who have the zoning ordinances and some of the other requirements that they would typically provide to businesses. But I can see now it would have been helpful for us to do some of the work that Oregon did in helping the businesses understand what I need to be aware of.
Yeah, we had, I mean, we did do a lot of education work in preparation for the ballot measure. And then the ballot measure passed, so we had a website up, running, you know, three days later. So it became the focal point for activity. We've had, I don't know, probably three and a half million over hits on that website over the time that it's been up. But you can go on it now, and it's just evolved over time. It's become the focal point for Oregon regulation. You can find what you need to find about our system by going to, what is it? Oregon dot marijuana dot gov. And it'll show you the entirety of the evolution of the Oregon system. There's frequently asked questions that are involved. This business guide, the readiness guide I handed to you, has been amended, I've noticed, you know, over 20 times on the back page. So we did spend a lot of time on communication. We also spent a lot of time in our rulemaking process with the industry. Industry made up the bulk of our technical advisory groups. So when we were talking about what regulations you should have on the grows, we were meeting with industry members and going through before we even started developing our rules, because we had to understand, you know, what they wanted, how they did things, so that we could begin to regulate in ways that made sense for them. So we did that with each type. So they served on our rules advisory committee. The other great thing we were aided by during that first period is our legislature actually formed a joint committee. I want to call it bicameral, they called it joint. It, it had the House and Senate members, and it was in existence in 2015, and they changed the law in 15, right after the ballot measure passed. So we had other issues to deal with right away. And it's been together, in 16, we had a short session there, in 17, it was there. But you know, by the time you educate everyone around what this is, because it takes a lot of depth, a lot of knowledge, it really greatly assisted our experience in evolving our system.
Okay. Now, Stephen, you said four million people in your state. And how many in, how many-
Seven million. And then I looked on my flight over, you've got 3.8 million in the city of Platteville.
So I was just curious. So what was the one thing that you wish you didn't do? Or what would you recommend we?
There's a lot of things I wish I didn't do. I don't know what was most important on that list. But the thing that is really tough is, you get, if you're doing a tracking system of any kind, and you have to hire staff, and you're trying to figure out at the same time what your rules are, and then you've got to interpret them, you know, for your staff that you're training along the way, that's really, really tough to do in a short period of time. So when we exited the 2015 session, we put together our licensing automated system and our cannabis tracking system. So the licensing system, we basically put that together in six months. We had about eight months to do the tracking system. And it's not just, and to the cannabis community that's here, I can say, it's worth the time for you to make sure that those systems are well-done and work for you. Our tracking system has created problems for our industry. It's complicated, and it makes a big difference in the future life of a regulatory system if you're going to track it. So taking the time to do those pieces right, to get a better sense where you're going to align those things, is really important to a good start for everyone in the system, for the state, for the licensees, and to get up and running in good stead.
I think when you ask what, I think maybe it's just the challenges. And the challenges are basically built around the fact that it conflicts with federal law. So there would-
Now, wait a minute. Let these people talk. You're disrupting. Go right ahead, sir. Now, I'm going to ask you to be quiet, man. Sergeant, let's have a talk with him. Okay.
So I'm just saying because-
So, go ahead. Go ahead.
Because it conflicted with federal law, it meant that, it meant that we had to expend the resources and the time to create a traceability system, a seed-to-sell system that typically you wouldn't need with any other product if it didn't conflict with federal law. We saw that continually challenge us. Probably the biggest challenge we had was there was no playbook. So there was no one that had legalized recreational marijuana anywhere in the world. So we actually went to Europe to look, not went, but asked, because we thought that's where it was regulated. It's been decriminalized, but nowhere in the world was there a system of regulation, licensing enforcement, taxation, regulation, anywhere, other than medical in Colorado. So we learned a lot from Colorado. We used the action levels for pesticides that Oregon put in place. But I think that, I think there are a lot of things that could have been done better had we known what we were walking into. And so I get back to the fact that Oregon did a lot of communication upfront. We were so busy trying to implement the new law, that now we've formed the kind of advisory groups that are necessary to work with the industry to find out, should we amend the packaging and labeling requirements that we have? We just did an agreement with the Department of Agriculture to do random testing for pesticides. There was concern by the medical community and patients that there were pesticides in the product, even though since 98, which is when we got our Medical Marijuana Initiative passed, pesticides had been used on marijuana for, medical marijuana for years. But I guess what I would share is that continued to be a challenge, which required us to be very restrictive in the fact that we knew that the federal government was watching very closely what was happening in our states.
So when you're testing product, do you ever reject anything? Rejective product?
Well, the labs would reject that product. That's correct.
They actually do reject.
They do, for pesticides.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody mention delivery. So what-
Oregon, so we did allow home delivery in our rules. We make them in our, and this is a case where we, we didn't start off with it. We thought we might have it. Some, there was some public safety concern initially, and we kept working with our rules advisory committee. I think actually people changed their mind about their public safety concerns. But then it was, so we put it in. By God, it didn't work with our manifest for transportation, the way it worked with the point-of-sale. And so now we've got something that people have to manually plug it into. But we do have the home delivery. You can go, they can carry, so I can't remember what the value was of the amount of product, but you can make X numbers of stops for home delivery around the way you enter your product.
So all that's structured.
And then you come back. All structured, detailed, all requires tracking as you remove any product from the facilities that is not sold.
What about in your state?
Well, we just had a different experience. We, the initiative did not allow delivery. There've been a couple of legislative proposals to provide it, but they've not passed. Part of the problem was, we were trying to rein in medical into a regulated system, which it was not in Washington, which had delivery, which basically was a commercial venture. The dispensaries had become a place for folks to get recreational marijuana. Anyone in Washington could qualify for an authorization card to be a medical patient. Not to say that there aren't thousands and thousands of truly medical patients in Washington State, but our medical dispensaries became an outlet for recreational marijuana. And that had been occurring for years before legalization. So, so delivery was not allowed, because we had problems in the major cities like Seattle with illegal product being delivered.
I'd just add, in terms of the challenges, the whole nexus between recreational and medical, I think has been a challenge for all the states in different ways. And we have a really, you know, decades-old embedded Oregon marijuana program on the health side, medical program on the health side. And, and the changes to our statute, because we were initially recreational only, in our production stream from our producers up to retail, we can now produce medical-grade product, which is basically the dosages are much higher. We're 5 and 15 milligrams on edibles, which I think Colorado's 10 and 100, I believe, still.
10 and 100.
And so anyway, my point is, that was a hard, so they allowed us to produce medical products. So our retailers that started off purely recreational are now also selling medical product, tax-free, to cardholders. We still have the medical program out there, and we're trying to figure out in the state how to integrate that program with the more regulated recreational system. And you know, a lot of those people have been in it for a long time. They had caregivers and cardholders, and that relationship worked for them. So there's a lot of people that really care deeply about this system. It's been difficult for us to figure out how to regulate it, how not to, because the economy of scale just isn't there for some of these to really be commercial enterprises. So how do you put all these security requirements around them and make it work when you're sitting out in rural Oregon somewhere?
Mr. Harris Dawson, you have a couple of questions?
Thank you all so much for your presentation. I just had a question that neither of you covered, and I just, out of curiosity. Sometimes when we set up new enterprises like this, like we recently did gambling in California, there's a little gamblers, if you have a problem gambling, call, you know, this number. Do you all, did you all set up a program like that? Or any sort of backstops for people that fell into addiction or had addiction as a problem?
So one of the interesting things in Washington through the initiative was funding was directed to the Department of Health, Department of Social and Health Services. Very little of the money in Washington goes to the general fund. 50 percent of the revenues derived from cannabis goes to the state Medicaid federal program for healthcare. And then others, large chunks, go to the Department of Health for education, not only for adults and parents, but with children. There's a whole campaign that's out there. And then with respect to the Department of Social and Health Services, there's millions of dollars going to prevention, not just for cannabis, but where there's been deficiencies for years and cuts that are being made in those programs. Because like all states in Washington, we've had deficit issues. Where do they get cut first? It happens there, Department of Health, Department of Social Health Services. So new funding has come there to assist those in the prevention community with, with the kind of programs that you're talking about that have usually been cut.
Same story for Oregon. So there was a distribution formula with the tax revenue. It goes to education, it goes to law enforcement, the local and city and county, and then it goes to the health programs and to prevention along the way. The legislature did fund a pilot program where they were really looking to see what would be effective at really deterring youth from making the choice to use cannabis before they were of age. And that, and so the Department of Health has been, or the Oregon Health Authority's been carrying that out, but really looking at the, how to make those choices for them. We have some interest, and we had some opportunities to have some prevention work through O L C C. But mainly, we're dealing with smaller school-sized issues or, or youth that are coming to testify, actually, on our regulations.
Okay. Do you have any programs in place to assist women and minorities to get into the industry?
We do not.
So we generally do in Oregon, and I believe the governor's office, the small women, or women and minority office would support these businesses as they would any other business, because it's a legal business in Oregon. We also did extensive outreach as part of our rules advisory committee meeting. And we worked, there's actually a Minority Cannabis Association in Portland, and actually, they sat on our rules advisory, I might be wrong on which committee. Sat on multiple committees, a couple of the committees that we had. And- And then we did outreach to minority communities about getting them into the business. So, I got to admit, it was a little odd with the product that we were going out to ask people to get involved with, but we did do outreach.
Okay. I can appreciate that. Last question. What's your relationship like with the local governments? How does that, how did that work out for them? You know, how many dispensaries do you have in the state? Is there a set number? Is it within the jurisdiction of the local municipalities to set that number? Or, you know?
So, that was a huge challenge and problem for the state. Early on, we went to the Attorney General to ask for a formal opinion, because what we'd learned is that many cities and counties were imposing bans or moratoriums to the businesses themselves. We asked the Attorney General to give us a formal opinion. We're about ready to issue licenses. What are we supposed to do with respect to this? What they basically said is that the initiative was silent. In the law after prohibition, you had dry counties and cities that could vote to be wet or vote to be dry. Parts of the country, they're still dry. That was not placed in the initiative. So, because it didn't speak to it, what the Attorney General stated was that those cities and counties could impose bans of moratorium. The problem was, because there was nothing in the requirement that said we needed to respect that ban or moratorium, we had to issue licenses. So, there was a conflict there between the state, and it continues today. The only thing that makes that a little easier is that we have restricted the number of retail outlets and restricted the number of producer-processers statewide. But that has created a lot of challenges. You know, honestly, I would make sure that there was something in the state law, or probably in state law, that provides that you have to abide by local ordinances with respect to zoning and the rest of it. Typically, like for a liquor license, we don't get involved in that, because that's your, that's your ordinance, that's your law. You enforce it. We'll enforce the regulations that we put in place. But I'll be honest with you, that has been a challenge constantly, where the cities and counties are saying, why are you not respecting our right to not have those businesses? In our state, 45% of the voting population voted no. So, you have portions of eastern Washington where there are many bans in moratoriums. But to be honest, two-thirds of the population is in the Puget Sound area, and there, there are many producer-processors and retailers.
See, I didn't break ours down, but what was more like 35% no, 65 yes, just something like that?
Great thing about Oregon on that whole, how did you vote and who should opt in and opt out, is part of the political bargain afterwards, and I think it was pretty explicit, I could say that about the joint committee's work on it, was they actually allowed, they made a decision that certain counties where it had failed would be opted out, that they could have the opportunity to decide what they, some self-determination on what they wanted in those counties and cities that didn't vote for it, which was kind of a tough pill for some people to swallow, given we just had a statewide popular vote. But a lot of the counties then did take, and cities took the opportunity, primarily eastern Oregon, to opt out or to be out, and affirmed that they were opt out by majority vote. They had to take another vote. They still have the opportunity today to opt in and opt out, and now they did have a, they didn't share in the revenues as much if you opted out. And they still have the opportunity to come back in. So, that cleaned up a lot of the issue that Rick's had for us. We respect, in the Oregon law, local government's authority in another major way, we don't start dealing with an application until we get what in Oregon's called a land-use compatibility statement. So, the county, if it's county jurisdiction or city, needs to sign off that this business that wants to be in that zone and that property is okay to be there. So, they've got to sign off. We don't start working on the applications until we know that. Now, if they're non-conforming use, it'll drag out, but we can tell if it's not allowed immediately, and we don't waste our time working on things that can't go in place locally. And then you have, you know, time, place, and manner of regulations, all locally controlled.
And, you know, I have a gazillion questions, but I'm going to take some questions from the audience. But I just want to, again, thank you, and also indicate that I'm certain we're going to be having a lot of our staff folk, you know, contact you to ask questions, and we probably will have some folk pay a visit so that we can get a feel, or they can get a feel and report back to this council as to, you know, recommendations as to how we are going to move forward. So, to the folks that came, again, welcome you. You know that we've, we've had a series of these hearings. This is not the last hearing. We will have more as we try to put all of this together. I'm going to just tell you in advance, it is no way I'm going to be able to take everybody's card. Most of you have been here before. You know I do the very best I can to make sure that everybody speaks. What I recommend, since we do have these two gentlemen from Oregon and Washington, when I call you up, it really would make sense if you have a question for them to just, you know, ask it, and then we'll get their input. So, I'm going to call up a few people now. I'm going to start with Ms. McAllister, Zachary Pitts, and Rebecca Gershberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been here since 10 o'clock, just like you. Mr. President, I'm against this. I don't trust the government. Like the man said, this is a part of God's earth, and that's where marijuana came from, came from the earth. But right now, even Dr. Francis Quest Welsing said that there are chemicals in this marijuana. So, this is not the pure marijuana, and it's going to be addictive, and our children, our babies are going to be smelling it around the house, and we're going to be addicting our children. Now, the city proposes that it can get, it can make $21.8 billion, with a B, in 2020, which is three years from now. So, this is now a profit-making legalized drug-dealing system. Now, Oregon's got about 4 million population here. We've got 40 million in California, so it's not the same thing. Another thing, transporting. This is like Brink's. You just can't put somebody in a truck and transport. You may have a million dollars worth of marijuana. We need to treat this like legalized drug-addiction mafia-style a process. That's all this is. I have more to say.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. So, if I could get Mr. Pitts, and again, if we could attempt to ask questions, the reality of the situation is, it's in place. California has voted for it. We have to regulate it, and that's what we are attempting to do. I know that it's challenging, and we just have to do the best that we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Zachary Pitts, and I run a medical marijuana delivery service here. I'm part of the Southern California Coalition and the L.A. Delivery Alliance. And on March 7th, the voters resoundingly passed Prop M, demonstrating extraordinarily wide support for a healthy, broad, and inclusive cannabis industry. I just wanted to thank the staff and council members, and they should be commended for their responsiveness and openness to working with the constituents, neighborhood councils, and those working in the cannabis industry. I appreciate the input from Oregon and Washington. I think an important takeaway from the lessons is many regulations besides zoning are determined at the state level, and intervening too heavily might push jobs and taxes to other municipalities. Additionally, to the Washington LCB representative, given the continuing existence of a black market, do you wish, do you wish that there were more licenses issued? Thank you for your time and effort.
Well, I think even the delivery, sorry.
Just try it again.
Okay. I think the delivery issue is one that we want to take a look at, because of what you just said. If that's the means by which people are used to having marijuana, I'm surprised the amendments to the medical marijuana law in Washington didn't require or allow for delivery. That would make sense to me. But as far as recreational, I think we may be looking in the interim, after our session, at looking at making delivery available. And did I, did I miss one part of that?
It was also about increasing...
No, that's, no, if you missed it, you missed it.
I'm sorry.
All right. So, after Rebecca, I want, is it Melanie Too or Melanie To, and Gray Hunt, please come forward. The sooner you guys get in line, the more people I'll be able to get to. So, if I call you, come get in line. And then Ruben Honig. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. First time here at one of these. It's been very informative. Thank you guys for being so generous with information. I appreciate your candor. My name is Rebecca Gershberg. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Cannabis Task Force, and I, like many people here, believe cannabis belongs at the forefront of regulated contemporary medicine. As a woman and a business owner, I know how difficult it can be to shift these societal and cultural perceptions. Do believe Los Angeles permitting system will not only improve the quality of cannabis, it's going to allow women to thrive as small-business owners, expand access, calling for us to embrace research, create jobs, set high standards for consumer safety, and ultimately shift the perception of marijuana. I'm getting ready to launch a business here in L.A., and I do uphold these core values, and I'm excited to be a part of this momentous occasion in California, and really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, so if I could have the next speakers?
Good evening. My name is Melanie To, and I'm a resident of L.A. City, and I am also a preventionist from the nonprofit organization Behavioral Health Services in Hollywood. I am a part of the Los Angeles County Rethinking Access to Marijuana Coalition, where our mission is to protect youth in our communities from marijuana-related harms. I'm here tonight to ask our elected officials to think about our children when creating these regulations. Please be mindful of our children. Please think about where they go to school, how many of them walk to and from school, where they live, where they play. And, and, I'm sorry. And also, with the increase of availability, it is likely that there is a lead, it is likely to lead to an increase of access and youth. The National Monitoring Futures Study has consistently shown that roughly 80% of 12th graders, 70% of 10th graders, and 40% of 8th graders in the United States report that marijuana is either, thank you.
Thank you. Again, let us try, folks, to take advantage of the fact that we have two individuals here from out of state. So, I understand you may want to make a statement, and that's great. But this is a rare opportunity to ask questions. So, again, yes, identify yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gray Hunt. I'm a local cannabis edibles company owner on the west side here in Los Angeles. I'm also a mother of a third grader, and I support local education for our cannabis community by gatherings that support topics like how to talk to our children about cannabis. I'm in a big support of teaching our children that cannabis is a medicine and to respect it as such, and support a new wave of thinking for our children, and as that supports normalization and legalization. My question to you gentlemen this evening would be to understand more about how you involve the local businesses and local community to support education and to support the regulations that go into action for us. How do you bring us together to do that with you?
I'll take the first shot, Rick. I don't think, I don't think we've really been directly involved in that, you know, and we're sort of the overhead regulator for the entire state. But the thing that's really been a part of the conversation that we've stimulated and had and worked on with the joint committee is really this discussion, it was almost ubiquitous across the 11 communities when we first started talking about cannabis regulation in our communities and in the legislature. And everyone identifies children as an important focal point, and it's almost, it's an interesting agreement between proponents and no opponents, even though folks are concerned about what it means for their children either way. The cannabis community obviously has been interested and puts more on parental responsibility for helping educate their children. They want, they want others to, you know, make more restrictions on the color of the, or don't allow gummy bears in the colors of those. And that's sort of how the debates happen for me at the state regulator level.
I think it was early on, at least two years ago, it felt like, even in the governor's office, and the governor had said, Rick, people are not aware of what's going on here. You need to get out there. So, several of us, four or five of us at the agencies, created a standard presentation we would take to the Rotary, the Chamber, any kind of organization that asked. And in fact, it wasn't until three months ago that typically I'd be in one or two different meetings a week, just kind of at a very objective, fair level, trying to explain what the new law provides and what it does. Because again, remember, 45% of our state said no. And so, there's a real balance there between those who just are not there with respect to legalization, don't believe it's the proper policy. And so, I think educating, regardless of your position, here's what it is in the community, here's what it looks like, here's how it operates. So, we've put a lot of effort and time into that.
Thanks, Ken. So, if I get Ruben, and then Victoria Hare, and Ann McCall, and Wayne Spindler. Yes?
Good evening, Council President Wesson. Councilmember Suezar Harris-Dawson, and thank you to our friends from Oregon and Washington for your presentation. It was extremely informative. Today was a momentous day for the city of Los Angeles in the, with the vote with the city council for the adoption of a commission with an executive director. That was one of the pillars of our organization with the Los Angeles Cannabis Task Force when we presented, asked to your Rules Committee last year, and thank you for that.
Yes.
As well as this public hearing process. Every day, we get a step closer to a fair, responsible, and equitable cannabis industry in the city of Los Angeles that is no longer in the shadows. So, thank you for all of your work, and to staff and all the organizations that have done this. My question to the gentleman here is, a big portion of the city of Los Angeles is a cottage industry of small businesses, small to medium-sized, but more small businesses. Are there any programs, or have you thought of any programs to protect that, the equity of that?
That's a good question.
In the industry?
You mean cottage within the cannabis industry?
Cottage within the cannabis industry in the city of Los Angeles.
So, one of the interesting things about the initiative in Washington, it's $250 for an application fee and a $1,000 annual fee. So, the idea there in discussions with Allison Holcomb, the author of the initiative, was to let as many people in as possible. That's why they had the, not allowing the vertical integration. They didn't want one entity or one company to control a large part of the marketplace. In fact, the board by rule instituted that an entity can only hold one producer license in our state, and an entity could only hold three retail licenses. In effect, you know, spreading the marketplace throughout the state. So, I think that's the way that, we were told the same things in the, in the public forums that we had, don't allow big tobacco to come in, allow for it to be a small cottage industry. I think we're doing that.
You know, I'm glad that, that's something that most of us have been, yeah, give him a round of applause. I mean, that they would be on top of that, because it's a very important issue. And I know, because I see so many familiar faces, that that's an issue that we've talked about before. It's a concern, so it's good to hear your response to it. Okay, Mr. Spindler?
Well, yes, um...
Mr. Spindler, this ain't no joke. Can you just, these people don't want to hear you act stupid. Come on, man.
I just, look, I'm here for Cannabis for Kids, if you've heard of that organization I'm from. We like to put pot in schools, and when the students go to the student store and they get a little bit of THC, I think it's a good introduction, because you guys go to Wall Street, and you guys are from Wall Street. So, you need to have vertical integration and get the kids hooked at a lower age. But you start them with a little bit of THC, and then you step them up to a higher level, and then you can raise the price. So, we're fully in support of this. And again, it's K-A-N-N-A-B-A, Cannabis for Kids. Let's all get high, and we don't have to worry about Donald Trump. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. And so, you have some fans. You guys can go out and hang with him. Okay. So, Victoria, Ann McCall, Gilbert, is it Morin or Mora? Tomer, where are you? I knew you'd be here somewhere. Come on down. And again, let's take advantage. We've got the folk here to ask a question. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tomer Graziani, and I'm here behalf of the Southern California Coalition and the L.A. Cannabis Task Force. There's two questions that I'd really like to ask the two of you. One was mentioned a little bit here, which is equity, and the other is public consumption. In terms of equity, I would like to know if you have numbers or statistics of how many of the licenses are actually issued to people from the community, people that live there, rather than big corporations that can afford a costly licensing process? I don't know what kind of licensing process you have, and how long it takes, and if you need to have a fleet of lawyers, or if it's something that a small, average person from an average neighborhood in the city can actually go and apply and start a business. And in my mind, the two easier ones are something like a delivery, where there's not a lot of restriction... of restrictions. The other one is public consumption. I don't know what the laws are in your state, but over here for recreational, you're not allowed to smoke cannabis or consume it anywhere outside except your house, and that is a burden on non-homeowners.
Good question.
Well, I think the social justice and equity issues, just to start with, and you had asked the question, councilman, was something that I wish we had considered. It didn't... And the problem with us is we open and close the system. It's not a system that's open. We opened and closed it for 30 days, which is what Colorado did when we first began the process. And I think... And then when we melded medical in, it became clear to us after we had closed the door that many of the minority communities felt that they were not able to get into the system. So I think some of the work that I've seen in the documents that you've created, we'll be looking at that. And I think it's a problem in parts of Seattle where the community is not represented in those stores. There are people that live away from the community that hold those stores. And so however you can make that happen, however you can do that, it needs to represent the community that lives in that neighborhood.
If I just say, on Oregon's side, you know, we have a wide-open system. It's qualifications-based, so there's no barriers except, you know, not being a criminal and being able to write a security plan and put it through. People have worked through it without lawyers regulating. Our smallest tier of grow is $1,000 license. Our indoor small square footage one is 625 square feet, outdoor 2,500 square feet.
I know that in Colorado, for example...
No, Tomer, come on, I got a lot of other people. I got a lot of other people here. Let's be...
So in any case, we have several tiers. We have that move up in size and scale, and in terms of corporate ownership or not, I'm sure we have quite a bit. I can tell you that I haven't seen a lot of it. I know a lot of it's Oregon investment, you know, and I haven't actually... We haven't done a sort and looked at our database for that again now, but I can't say that I've seen any one industry entities really coming in and buying up. A lot of fears out there about that, but even the cannabis community's own communication networks aren't talking about that anymore in Oregon right now, because I don't think it's happening.
Okay, thank you. Next, 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 next. Chris, or identify yourself.
Good evening. My name's Gilbert. I am a professional... a prevention professional for Behavioral Health Services in Hollywood. I'm also the chair for Rethinking Access to Marijuana, a collaboration of county-funded nonprofit public health agencies seeking to prevent marijuana-related harms to youth in Los Angeles. I'm just here to propose like a common sense regulation that would limit access by youth and exposure to marijuana. I brought you guys a couple of folders. I don't know if you have them with you. They're the dark blue folders, and it basically gives you information that...
Oh, yeah, they're here.
Okay. It basically has information in there about marijuana and regulations. We have what they call a policy menu that we developed that helps municipalities, you know, kind of navigate what it means to have the different kinds of licenses that California's going to be offering. So with that, I would like to offer our services as RAM, Rethinking Access to Marijuana, as a resource for public health perspective in this, you know, how you guys figure out.
Thank you. Okay. And at this point, we're open to listen to just about everyone, and I think we've been doing this. We've been in this process since last May, so it's almost a year that we've been having hearings, listening to the community, trying to adjust or take some of the recommendations that you make. So please come, sir. Identify yourself, and I'm looking for a Chris from Coang. I can't make out the last name, and I think I have a Skye.
That's me.
And a Michael Barber. Please come forward. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Christopher Sage. I'm part of the LA Cannabis Task Force, and I am also a business owner here in Los Angeles. We do cannabis-infused fine dining, and we throw events that are for privately held, but what we are looking to do is set industry standards on how to dose people in a what we call live consumption setting. And so far, there are no municipalities... There's no laws or any bills in place or licensing to accommodate for anything onsite consumption in the same vein as Tomer was saying about public consumption. I think that there is a huge deserving of a regulated onsite consumption, and I was just wondering if there's any plans to bring those to Los Angeles, and if you guys have thought about it in your respective states.
So Oregon is debating bills currently about allowing social consumption. I don't think they have much hope now, but you know, it's a wave. It's coming. You can feel it and see it. In fact, Oregon went backwards a little bit in social consumption, because they had sort of private share facilities that you could smoke in, but the Indoor Clean Air Act in Oregon wiped those out. So they're now looking at trying to at least re-establish that. And our Rules Advisory Committee, even law enforcement, talked about the need to have legal places to socially consume marijuana, because otherwise it's out on the street and your problems may be there if there's problems. And you're talking about a refined setting. We have certainly licensees that want to do events on their grows, like wineries do. So it's being discussed, I think, probably first for us, and so we also regulate alcohol. So we've been very clear, the two don't mix right now in our world of regulation. But, you know, I can see the day sooner rather than later when we begin to do special permits for kinds of events that are happening on private property where you want to do more. It's coming. It's coming slowly, and of course, a lot of our community in Oregon is interested in sort of cannabis tourism and building their industry that way, so they're looking forward to that, but I just don't think it's going to jump there. It's going to take a little more time.
It's almost exact same in Washington. About three legislative sessions, including this, went to allow for public cafes. What really gets in the face of it is the public smoking ban right away, but I could see it coming. I can see it in allowance for like the special permits that we have for alcohol, but I don't see it happening in the next year or two.
You know, and as the regulator, I'll say this, and someone who's been pretty... worked with the industry to build it up, I'd have a hard time regulating it right now with all the activities we are doing, just to get the license committee out, to get it clearer on some of their economics. I think it'd be really hard for us to take that on right now, just on a practical basis if we ended up with a response. I admit there's others out there in Oregon that could do it, but it'd be tough right now.
Hey, and Chris, Chris, when we had our hearing a few weeks ago, I want to say, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, that the representatives from Colorado said that there's legislation moving to create some kind of private clubs?
Clubs. Clubs? That already exists. I mean, that's what's happening now.
But we'd have to... We'd have to... I mean, that could be what's happening now, but, you know, there probably a bunch of those on my street, okay? But, uh... So that's at least what they're talking about. So I got you. So can I add a next speaker? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. And distinguished guests, my name is Skye Siegel. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Cannabis Task Force, here to speak and echo some voicing concerns about the need to establish delivery regulations. Several years ago, I was hospitalized. I had a severe spine injury that resulted in microdiscectomy. I was immobilized, and I did not have access to medicine. And I know there are many underserved communities in the Los Angeles area that would benefit from medicinal cannabis, and I would like that not to be an afterthought, but as something that is actually developed in league with both the cities and also the legislative partners in the state. Thank you.
We allow delivery of alcohol in Washington. I'm not sure why we shouldn't allow cannabis, especially when you put it in the context of medical patients.
You know, I talked a little bit about our debate in Oregon, and so when there was... People had the dim view of it. They did want to provide, even in our minimal rule when it started, it did provide for access to medical patients and home delivery to a medical patient, and then we widened it out later in a subsequent version of the rule.
So, sir? Identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Michael Barber. I'm a resident of Los Angeles, Vietnam Vet, and I was at the last meeting you had at Southwest College, and a lot of the participants were wondering, how much front money do you need to operate a small retail establishment? Because really, the only way we can control the dispersion of this product is if we own a place in our neighborhood. So could you give us an idea for a small retail place, what it might cost upfront?
Good question.
Outside the license?
I only know our regulatory components that really go into the business, to be frank with you, but what I'll say is, it's really important that you consider it a well-financed and that there's... A lot of the businesses in Oregon made a rush to do everything they could, to buy land, to get it... They collected up and spent all their capital down, got into our system, and, you know, we had regulations that were changing along the way, and they had trouble making it through when the pesticides regulation came in place. So I don't know that I really know the cost to get in, even in my state, but I will say that it's really important to consider your business plan and to have the wherewithal to know that the government regulating you and the community itself is going to want and seek changes along the way pretty constantly, and sometimes that can be a rough ride for those businesses that were early adopters.
Well, retail.
I think it's expensive. I mean, look at the security, the cameras, the traceability system that we require you to get under, the regulations that he just spoke of. I think it's difficult. I think that's why when Oregon did the communication of trying to make sure the city and the county and the state are aligned in helping businesses understand what they need to do in order to comply. I can remember the first call I got from someone saying, "I had to pay $7,500 for a building permit in the county." And I said, "Well, you've never owned a business in this county, have you?" So, I mean, there's just a lot of folks that have not owned or been in a legal business where they're regulated, and you're not just talking about the cannabis boards here. You've got city and county regulations that have to be met. I think, you know, I can't tell you what the number is. I can tell you it's expensive.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. No, Mr. Barber, that's your time. No, they stopped it for you, but trust me, you've been there for a minute. I need... Hal, I saw you earlier. Come on down, and I thought I saw Virgil, and I know I saw Donnie. So come on. Doesn't matter. Come on, Hal. We're all on first-name basis these days.
Yes, we are, and I want to thank you for this morning, too. I was here for that. So thank you very much.
I thought I saw you.
Yeah, my name's Hal Lewis. I own a small dispensary delivery service for the entertainment industry, dealing with very highly sick patients. I want to thank you both gentlemen for coming down. Also, Pam Leppstein was here earlier. She had to leave from Greenwise to go to another city to write the regulations. She's offered her services to you personally. I want to let you know that. Quick question. I also own the first hemp farm, or had the first hemp farm in California. I know this is a tricky situation. How did you... Your states... I know Oregon is growing, and it has been growing. I'm not sure Washington. I know it's on the books, but I don't know if you planted your first crop yet. How are you dealing with the seeds for the hemp? Because those hemp seeds need to be regulated. Was it a don't look, don't ask process, or what was it? Thank you.
Actually, for us, it's the Department of Agriculture that's regulating hemp growth, but I don't know much about it, to be totally honest with you. But let me just do one thing, because you talked about medical patients again. One of the things that's difficult, and you get a lot of cynicism around this, is because there's very little research and development that's there. When you have a federal conflict, that means UW and WSU and Washington State, who are the academic institutions that do the kind of research, aren't willing to do that. That's changing in the last couple of years, but I would suggest to all of you and the folks that are here, the councilmen, that you do what you can. We've had a struggle even creating our research license, because it's hard for us to get a board at WSU, or a review board at WSU or UW, from those different departments to be part of that. There's got to be greater research that's done to kind of take away some of the stigma that's there with respect to medical cannabis.
100%.
Same thing. It's the ag board, and I can't remember what they did for the seeds, but I originally went for that. But now, you know, since the federal government provided additional guidance around hemp and CBD products with Hemp for Schedule I, it's affected our regulatory system, because we were first not clear about what hemp products we should allow in our retail outlets. Then we figured out we don't regulate hemp at all. We're just marijuana, and that's what the statute says. But in the end, the hemp community wanted their products on our shelves in the retail environments, and we allowed them, if they would track in to the product preparation, the packaged product, they'd bring the product in and track it through. Now, we still haven't looked at it and said, "Oh, well, Schedule I CBD, we don't have authority. We probably can't allow those kind of products to come in." But hemp's been a different creature in here to regulate, and we've... I think in Oregon, what's liable now, what may happen, I'm not quite sure that we're focused in dealing with it, but I think what probably will happen is Department of Ag will regulate grow to a point, and then if you want it into products that are consumables for human consumption, they'll track the product into our system from there, allow us to do it, and then we'll track and package it into its various products and sell it in our controlled store under a COE memorandum-type circumstance. But that's not done yet, and it could happen to all Department of Ag, and we provide them access. It certainly is going to be different, because, you know, the scale is so much different than marijuana.
Thank you, gentlemen, for both, and I'd like to hear your contact information.
Thanks, Hal. Virgil?
Good evening. My name is Virgil Grant, president of Southern California Coalition and co-founder of California Minority Alliance. Thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for being here. Two questions. For a state that has had medical marijuana here for 21 years, and then regulating versus both of your states who regulated first and then had shops, how do you see that, and what advice do you have? Also, barriers to entry as far as your criminal background check? Are felons excluded from the industry? That's another question. And when you speak on minority equity, how do you address that?
Well, we have a point system with respect to your criminal history. If you've had a felony in the last 10 years, this can be problematic, but there was an adjustment made by the board considering that it's likely that people in this industry have had a criminal record. So we do have a point system. We don't want to block people naturally out of the system, but some have been. To address the equity issue, I'm not sure, but we're working on it. We think it's important to do it.
On felonies, we're five years, background check, and we do, if there's certain kinds of crimes, we can take a look deeper and do a good cause analysis if we think there's problems with the kind of felonies that are on there. We've done that a couple of times, but people are not getting rejected for felonies. Marijuana crimes have been decriminalized in Oregon extensively, so a bunch of the marijuana and drug law violations are exempt from us, excluding access to the industry because of those actions. And in terms of the industry outreach, I mean, we've, as I said before, we've met with folks, we went out and talked with them. It's really, you know, not unlike other equity issues. It's a capital issue, right? You need the capital to get into business, and that's what I've found that most in the community, communities of diversity are looking for in the process and try to find their way in, because the entry points are there. So, you know, our business guide does direct folks to capital, directs them to the small business, minority of women, small business, and, you know, we've had representation and worked with the Minority Cannabis Business Association to try to develop those routes of access for them.
But that's a really good point on the access to capital, because that's the biggest problem in this industry, is I can't go to a bank and get a loan. I might be able to get an account to move my money in and out of it, but I can't get those banks, even the credit unions or the state charter banks, to grant a loan. And for, you know, socially-economic minorities like myself, that is tough. I don't have the capital. I don't know where to get it. I don't have friends that have money. So that is going to continue to be a problem as long as it's Schedule I controlled substance.
Okay. Donnie?
Good evening. Thank you for having us today, councilman. I just wanted to say, California is the epicenter for cannabis. This is where it started. We want to make sure that we're not over-regulated, just like how alcohol and tobacco and other... We need to make sure that we keep it from children and keep it safe. we need to make sure that we keep it from children and keep it safe, do the testing, but make sure it's not over-regulated, because that can hurt this industry. We want to make sure that this is a thriving industry and it's open to all. My name is Donnie Anderson. I am the chair of the California Minority Alliance and a co-founder of the SEC. And we are the ones who helped put this together, and we don't want to see this industry hurt. We want to work with our leaders to make sure that this industry continues to add thousands of jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful, be careful that you balance that approach with the federal government today, who's looking very closely at the industry that we're creating. Just be wise about how you do that, because I heard the comments recently, you all did, and that's concerning. And so you may have to deal with some regulation upfront until this thing changes nationally, because there are people watching very closely what we're doing today.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, this is the big, I mean, it's just a matter of time. But I do think that now we just need to be very smart as to how we proceed. I'm going to call a couple of other folk up, and as I'm doing, Richard Eastman, and is, is Mr. Key still here? Kevin Michael Key. And just for those of you that are here, we're going to be doing, having other hearings. We're going to bring in individuals that will talk about delivery. We hope to have a hearing where we will bring in individuals that will talk about the health component and testing. And then we also hope to have visitors from cities in these states and let them talk to us about how their cities actually acted. So I'm excited about the future hearings that we have. Go ahead, Richard.
My name is Richard Eastman, and I'm a man living with AIDS since 1994 that's appeared before this council for many years promoting medical marijuana with Dennis Perone and the millions of patients in this country that benefit from marijuana for AIDS and cancer and medical marijuana. Saved my life. I had 22 T-cells, and some of the people here don't even know that Dennis Perone is living with a serious illness, and I'm living with a serious illness. And we want to make sure, my question for these men is, I've heard that Oregon and Washington sort of messed up medical marijuana. And I'm sick of the city of Los Angeles and West Hollywood and the state of California trying to mess the medicine that saved my life. Mr. Weston-
What's the question?
That's my question for these two men. And my question for you is, we need to keep it medical. We need to make sure the compassion for poor people, I've been giving out pounds of marijuana since Occupy LA on the streets of Los Angeles to people in wheelchairs and crutches and hospitals that can't afford to go into the pop shops. We need to keep it medical. All use is medical. What do you have to say to that?
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Richard. Next, you're not Mr. Key. Do Kevin Michael Key, are you Paul Scott? Now, are you Paul Scott? If I didn't call your name, please don't get in line. Okay. Okay, Mr. Scott? Yes, sir.
It's been a long time coming for me to stay here. There's a councilman that sits up there. He and I started the first medical marijuana shop in Los Angeles in 1999. Your colleague, Karen Price. Years ago, if you could Google me, Paul Scott Marijuana, you'll see it there. "I started this," there's a song that calls by Ice Cube, "I started this, and this is the things I get." You may not have seen me, councilman, because I've been out there doing the work. Years ago, we started this because people were dying. It has evolved into something else. It's good for the involvement of medical, of marijuana, but it's important to recognize the genesis of this issue. There were black and brown people dying, constantly. Some of us risked our lives to make sure that stopped. Now, there's corporations coming in, piggybacking off of that effort.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll make sure that when I see Mr. Price on Friday, that I tell him that we met you. Okay, I'm going to bring Mr. Garland, Matt Garland, and then we're going to, Matt, you're going to be the last speaker for tonight's hearing. Matt Garland, please come on. Yes, sir. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Matt Garland with Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. Thank you for your time, and your presentation's very educational.
Hold on one second. Mr. Herman, please be quiet. You're disrupting the meeting. Go ahead, sir. Now, please be, please be quiet. Please be quiet, Mr. Herman. Please be, be quiet, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, please, please be quiet, so we can continue with our hearing. Mr. Garland, go ahead.
Some of the same themes that other speakers have been asking you. From a community safety perspective, dissolving the black market is a key concern. And alongside strong penalties for illegal activities, what is your experience with lowering the barrier to entry into the legal marketplace as part of the effort to provide a pathway for rogue operators to enter, to enter the legal marketplace? And I, I think I heard you speak a couple issues on this, subsidized fees and education for prospective businesses. But do you guys have anything to add?
I do. It's the heart of a proposal legislature is really considering right now. Because we said, we've had these issues between the traditional medical systems, the new regulatory systems, and tracking and what it means, and for, in Oregon, right now, and as part, we worked with cannabis growers and with the Legislative Committee members and negotiated sort of a process. We have 33,000 medical growers that are licensed to grow, you know, six plants for each license that they have there. That's a lot, and it's a lot to think about us licensing at once. So they're thinking about two things. One, providing an additional personal exemption on six plants for medical, just like our four-plant home grow, creating a subsidy, further subsidized medical sharing garden. 24, it's by square footage, but I'll use the plant shorthand, about 24 plants and less. And we would subsidize the fees, make it $500, and pay for the tracking system on the way. Those gardens then are put in place to, they have to take our tracking system, our metric framwell cannabis tracking system. Those gardens then, year one, we'd say, you share out to cardholders 50% of your product, and you can sell into our recreational market 50% of your product. That'll help them purchase perhaps some of the security stuff, but a lot of them, you know, have had fences and other things from the old Oregon Health Authority system that they've already done, so they do have some standards. Second year, they'd have to share out 75%, and then could sell 25% into the market. In our system, the REC medical system, I'm calling it now, because it really is all the way through REC medical and what we're regulating, we are currently developing a rule that allows a bump-up. The bump-up canopy that we would be, would be under the same terms. You get the additional canopy of your grow if you shared out 75% of that canopy to cardholders for medical purposes. You can buy medical at our new retail shops, and 12% of medical patients are sales within the REC system, which is the REC system. It's both. So there's going to be pretty ubiquitous access to medical products. The real issue, I think, is a lot of people have developed in Oregon direct relationships between the caregiver and the grower, the particular kinds of strains they grow, is having that diversity of product in place. Taking care of that and trying to make that work on that micro basis with an allowance of immature plants and mother plants to do it is kind of look. But, you know, it's just hasn't, you know, it's not easy, but those are the kinds of things we're doing to preserve access to medical and to incent it and to make the transition come across. The other part, maybe shocking, we're going to allow sharing to the medical, so if this bill passes, this is, it had a great support, now it's waning, and every day it seems it's going away. The other, the other piece of it would be that we would allow sharing out to anyone who had a medical card up to three pounds during the annual year. But, you know, a lot of cancer patients, they need more quantities to make the oil. We just couldn't figure out, you can share out 40 pounds to everyone annually from our system. So we, they're revising the cannabis use, medical use board, and they're having them look at how to make that process where you have really sick people who really need more cannabis, need more oils, need, you know, the Simpsons oil and other products, that they can get that quantity of marijuana necessary to make it and find access to it. So it's, so someone needs to make that determination. I didn't want it to be us, because I thought we were just, you know, regulating at one level. And I think that really is, needs more expertise from the medical community, from the medical cannabis community, and from Oregon's public. So they're thinking about creating a board to help refine that, as you kind of meld these, you know, two systems that have come out of different values at different times.
I don't think we've gone as far as Oregon. There's basically three points of access for medical in Washington. I can grow for myself. I can form a cooperative with four persons or four other providers, up to, I believe, 60 plants. Or you can go to a medically endorsed retail store and purchase. You get an exemption from the retail sales tax somewhere between 7 and 10%, but very different than most of the states. The excise tax still applies in Washington to recreational and medical. And it's just a little bit more restrictive in Washington. We don't allow home grows for recreational. We're the only state in the Union that doesn't allow that. I'll be honest with you, in conversations with Colorado, as we're putting our regulations together, law enforcement said, "Don't allow people to grow their own marijuana unless they're medical patients, because they're going to compete in the black market with the recreational market that you have." So I'm just sharing with you, that's the way that people came to the place that they were in Washington. But I kind of like what I hear you saying in Oregon, where you have to bring those together. Obviously, if I'm a medical patient or a, or a cooperative in Washington, I can buy plants from a producer. It's the only way I can get access to it, unless I'm getting it through the black market. I don't know that I helped, but I just can tell you that's where we're set up.
All right, Matt. Thank you. I'd like to ask you guys, can we give Rick Garza and Stephen Marks another round of applause coming down from Washington and Oregon? And again, to all of you, this is not the end. This is the beginning. We'll be having hearings, you know, on a regular basis through the summer, I'm sure. I want to thank each and every one of you for your participation, and sorry that not everyone got a chance to speak today. It was, this is the only meeting where that has occurred. So again, drive safely, and thank you. This meeting is adjourned.